Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 29th, 2020, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Lewis is excused. We are all present.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda moving items 8A, Community Comment, and item 9C, Personnel and Policy, Policy 6320, Open Enrollment, to follow directly after item 7B, School Improvement Plan Update, due to the functioning and grouping in Board Docs, because it was difficult to make these slight changes. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I think, motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four is consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, School Board Announcements. Do we have any announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to item six, School Board Calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM. A regular Board of Education, oh, excuse me, a Board of Education Workshop Wednesday, February 26th, 2020, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM. And a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 26th, here at the ECC at 7:00 PM. Item seven, Reports, Presentations, and Other School Board Business. 7A, ADAM, or Automated Defibrillators in ADAM's Memory Recognition. Dr. Miller.
Good evening and welcome. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce a number of people who've responded remarkably in their service to Franklin Public Schools. As a superintendent, I couldn't be more grateful for the actions displayed by these individuals we'll recognize this evening. I'm also grateful for our Board of Education, because they do not waver in supporting the work we do in ensuring school safety. Tonight, we'll recognize employees and emergency personnel that work together to protect the safety of everyone in Franklin Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to introduce our school nurses, Ms. Lori O'Neal and Ms. Molly Cowell, to share with you how we've partnered with the Franklin Emergency Service Personnel and our staff to prepare and respond to a medical emergency.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you to you all for being here tonight, as we recognize the actions of everyone who responded to the medical emergency at the high school a few weeks ago. We'd like to start by providing you guys some background. On December 19th of last year, our evidence was accepted for each of our seven schools to obtain HeartSafe School designation from Project ADAM. Project ADAM is a nationally recognized program run through Children's Wisconsin that advocates for schools to have AEDs in addition to CPR and AED trained staff who are ready and able to respond to a cardiac arrest. Project ADAM works towards designating HeartSafe schools that are able to appropriately respond to a cardiac emergency. Project ADAM, and the ADAM stands for Automated Defibrillators in ADAM's Memory, was created following the death of Adam Lemel in 1999, following a cardiac arrest at a school where there was not an AED. Joel Lemel, ADAM's dad, joins us tonight, along with Ally Thompson, Project ADAM's administrator. On any given day, about 20% of the US population is in a school building. And over 140 lives have been saved since Project ADAM has been up and running. Work began on our designation in February of last year. We gathered data and developed specific protocols and practices to support and define the work that we have been doing with our emergency response teams. In 2007, thanks to the leadership of our then-District Nurse Issa Chase, our then-B buildings and grounds manager Mark Cludier, and our human resources coordinator Krista Remington, Franklin Public Schools secured AEDs for our schools and our district office. Every year, we've looked to improve our training, and with the support of the Board, Dr. Miller, and our administration, we've continued to elevate our practice. For the past two years, prior to the start of the year, we've presented to all Franklin Public School staff key actions that staff members can take to be prepared for a medical emergency. Our emergency response teams, which are comprised of our CPR and AED-certified staff from various disciplines within each building, have received district-wide training, which includes how to respond to specific medical emergencies, in addition to reviewing the steps in CPR and utilizing an AED. We have an excellent partnership with the Franklin Fire Department and Chief Remington. As a result, our teams were able to collaboratively assess how we can enhance our drills to simulate real-life events as much as possible. A few years ago, we began having drills with the Franklin Fire Department. Annually, each building has at least two unannounced emergency response team drills, where our teams call 911 and the Franklin Fire Department responds as they would in a real emergency. Every drill we run includes CPR and utilizing an AED. We debrief with our teams following each practice drill and each real emergency. We highlight our key learnings, in addition to the opportunities for growth, and our results continue to show that our teams get better with every opportunity. Molly will share some key details about what happened a few weeks ago.
Hi, everyone. Earlier this month, on January 2nd, at 8:02 AM, coincidentally, exactly two weeks from the time that our evidence was accepted to obtain HeartSafe School designation through Project ADAM, Ryan DePaul, a teacher at Franklin High School, heard calls from his students in his classroom asking for his help. Ryan turned to find that one of the students in his class, Hunter, had lost consciousness. What Ryan couldn't have known at that time was that Hunter was experiencing an unexplained sudden cardiac arrest. We now know that Hunter's heart was in a rhythm called ventricular fibrillation. So what this means is that instead of effectively pumping blood throughout his body, his heart was quivering and not supplying oxygen to his brain and vital organs. Ryan immediately began to care for Hunter, and in doing that, he enlisted the help of students in his classroom. Ryan had students push the button that would alert the office that help was needed in his classroom, and had students run to the office to get help from anybody who they could find. Hearing the call, Director of Athletics and Activities Jordan Hine sprinted from his office, arriving to Ryan's classroom 44 seconds after the student became unconscious. Five additional members of the building's emergency response team were there within a minute, which, it's a big building, so those are really cool times, guys. Ryan ran from his classroom straight to get the AED. He was back to the classroom within about 70 seconds from the time the student initially collapsed, and it took him seconds to get the device. National data shows us that about 50% of our workforce doesn't know where their AEDs are located within their building, so this is a really tremendous response. After Ryan got back to the classroom, Ryan made the call to 911 to get more help. Ryan provided essential information that Hunter was not breathing, his location within the building, and specific directions for the team to his classroom. The American Heart Association lists early defibrillation as a key guideline for somebody who needs care for cardiac arrest, and they define "early" as within three minutes of the time a person becomes unconscious if you're in a hospital. Because our team got the device there so quickly, immediately put the pads on Hunter, the device was advising a shock be delivered well within the three-minute timeline in that event in the high school that day. Jordan Hine, along with health nurse Cheryl Petrie-Bame, and associate principal Brian Karalivich, began administering chest compressions and rescue breathing at this point. Our AEDs have a component that allows our team to get real-time feedback about the quality of their compressions, and we are very confident to tell you that they were as close to perfect as compressions can be for a person who is in need of help. Again, the important piece to that is this is what is allowing oxygenated blood to circulate to that individual's brain and vital organs to minimize any sort of injury after the event. We absolutely couldn't ask for more when reflecting on our data and the response that we received from our community partners. The Franklin Fire Department was at the high school within five minutes of the time that the initial call to 911 was placed, and they were in the building 45 seconds after we started to see their vehicles roll up on the scene. Absolutely tremendous response from all of our partners. In addition to all these people, the entire building really, really did everything we could have ever asked them to do during an emergency. We had office staff and a team of student services staff who were bringing essential medical equipment to the classroom, who were communicating with each other about key information that needed to be shared with team members, and who were assisting our community partners with wayfinding within the building to let them get to the student in need so quickly. Looking at statistics specific to a sudden cardiac arrest event like Hunter's, the chances of survival are typically only about 50%. While the cause of his event is still being closely evaluated by his physicians, what we know to be true today is that Hunter has no obvious neurological deficits, that he has received an implanted defibrillator, and that he has returned to school with us at Franklin High School. Hunter's family would like all of the attention to be on the team tonight and the responders who helped care for Hunter, but they did ask that we share some words on their behalf to express their immense gratitude to the team.
I will do my best. On January 2nd, 2020, our son Hunter went into cardiac arrest at Franklin High School in Franklin, Wisconsin. Hunter had no known medical history, is physically active, strong, and otherwise healthy. Hunter had a permanent defibrillator implanted three days after his event. He is undergoing many different tests to determine the cause of the electrical malfunction, including genetic testing that helps diagnose medical conditions such as Brugada Syndrome. Genetic testing can take up to six weeks. Since Hunter was adopted from Russia at the age of two, there is no medical history of his biological parents. As parents, our focus is on his recovery, diagnosis, and treatment. We declined to be interviewed on camera, as that focus should be on the most amazing staff at Franklin High School that literally saved his life. The doctors said that he was lucky. Hunter was lucky that he attends Franklin High School. However, there was no luck involved in saving his life. That task was a combination of well-trained personnel, a well-planned emergency structure, and very caring and compassionate people, including fellow students. The Franklin Police and Fire were also intensely focused and efficient on stabilizing Hunter and transporting him to the hospital and making sure our family was able to be at his side quickly and safely. For those of you who don't know about Project ADAM and how this wonderful program empowers schools to save lives, please look it up on Facebook or at www.projectadam.com. What happened to Hunter happens more often than anyone realizes. The outcome is not always as positive as Hunter's. This program is making a difference. Thank you all for the well wishes we have received.
Thank you.
Following the event, Hunter's family made a very thoughtful and generous donation to Franklin Public Schools with a goal of supporting continuous improvement for our health services. Their hope was that they might be able to provide us with the resources to continue to train our staff, to make our schools, continue to make our schools a safe place to learn and to work. We have already begun putting those funds to use to increase our number of staff who are certified in first aid, CPR, and AED use. Those leaders have been incredibly committed to partnering with us in an effort to impact health outcomes for all students, and both personally and on behalf of all of us at Franklin Public Schools, I want to sincerely thank you.
I would like to introduce Matt Fox. He was instrumental in implementing our AEDs from Cardiac Science, and he is also a Franklin parent. Matt.
Thank you. Growing up here, working here, being part of the community, knowing many, many people in the community, the day that this happened, I got texts from my wife, who was part of the ERT team in the district, finding out more and more about what was going on, what happened. I live directly across the street from the high school, so I heard the sirens at 8:00 in the morning. So those types of things, I live with, hear about every single day, and we talked about it, not every outcome is the way, you know, the way that we want it to be and the way that this one came out. What we want, what we do, what I do with my job is, we work with the schools, we work with Project ADAM, we work with police and fire in promoting AED placement, getting AEDs wherever they can, so situations like this can be those successful saves. So with that, my wife and I are donating an AED to the family. From Cardiac Science, it's a Wisconsin-based organization, we are part of many school districts, and we want to extend what has happened here and give you a chance to pay it forward and an opportunity to place this, whether it's in your house, in your community, in your family, or out in the community, to be able to really pass it on for another person to have a chance at a survival.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal and Ms. Cowell for that, and thank you for your leadership. You do an incredible job. I didn't need to read that, I need to just say that. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Evans and Ms. Larson and I would like to come forward and recognize a number of individuals in the room. Okay? Yep, perfect. So when I call your name, if you would please come forward and accept our great thanks for what you've done and this certificate, shake a couple hands, and then please remain up here, because we certainly would like to take a photo tonight. So I'd like to begin by introducing our firefighters, first responders, and fire department, police department employees. We'll begin with Chief Adam Remington. Would you please come forward?
Start here and go that way, I guess. Thank you.
Battalion Chief Paul Rinders. Lieutenant Lance Braun. Firefighter, paramedic, James Valdez. Firefighter, paramedic, Robert Koots.
Thank you very much.
And firefighter, paramedic, Nicholas Zunker. From our Franklin Police Department, Sergeant Daniel Morris. Our very own Officer Scott Pepperaki. Officer Paul Turner, and I'd also like to mention that he escorted the family to the And Officer Rebecca Fletcher. I'm sure she's made it this evening. We're so proud of the relationship we have with you and so thankful, and just know you're always there for us. Thank you very, very much. So I think we have to have a photograph taken here.
Sound like you like each other?
All right, one, two, three, take another one on three. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Well done.
I would now like to introduce the members of our team at the high school who supported this response and positive outcome. Ryan DePaul.
Give him a hug.
And Jordan Hine. Cheryl Petrie-Bame. Brian Karalivitz. Sue Bolus. Peggy Watson. Joey Jonas. Mike Folo. Irma S. Praza. Stephanie Morgan. And Linda Hamm. And Sarah Pond. All of these individuals do not have to be on these teams, they choose to be. So we are so thankful for you and for what you do. Thank you.
Molly Cowell.
Chad, do you want a picture with Lori and Molly and the team? Okay.
Want to take a picture first or one more?
Why don't you take a picture with this group, with Molly and...
Perfect.
Okay, now I'm going to hand it over to them.
Matt Fox tells me he has a couple more things to say. If you want to come on up, sir, for a moment.
So I also have certificates for what we, Cardiac Science recognizes the CPR and the AED, so with that, also give the Lifesaver Award, presented by Cardiac Science, to Ryan.
And Cheryl Petrie-Bone.
I'd like to introduce Ally Thompson from Project ADAM.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. It is an honor to be here with you. My name is Ally Thompson. I'm the Project ADAM Administrator. Wow, I think it comes to my part, and I don't have much else to say. Project ADAM was built to do exactly what you all did, so it's just, it's incredible to be here. Project ADAM stands for being prepared, putting a plan in action. What we can't create is a community, is committed staff that are willing to do this. Molly and Lisa, who were committed in their leadership to push this forward. We can't make a school do that, but we can empower, we can offer resources, so it's just amazing to see the community that has come together. I want to say congratulations, they did become a HeartSafe School at the end of December. In the beginning years of Project ADAM, we focused our energy on convincing people that AEDs were the right thing to do, and that creating a team and a plan were the right thing to do. In 2016, we created this HeartSafe School designation so that we could really build a partnership with the school on behalf of the hospital, and really offer continuing and ongoing support. The entire Franklin School District, so not only the high school, has now achieved the designation, and they're within the first 300 schools in the state to do this, and there's over 3,000 schools, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty awesome achievement. So I just want to extend my gratitude. I also want to have Joe Lemel stand up. He's going to kill me for saying that, but I think we should give Joe a really big round of applause. So without further ado, I'm going to pass off the banner, and maybe we could do a picture. And what the banner stands for is the drills, what you put in place. It also stands for being an advocate, so every single person in this room is now so much more educated, so much more aware, to go out and ask a school if they're prepared. to go out and ask a school if they're prepared. If not, connect them to us. And be an advocate, because you can, because you all have that education now, and so it's just an amazing thing. So I'm going to grab the banner.
I would again like to thank all of you who responded in this emergency. I'd also like to thank all of our guests who are here tonight. We know that you're here because you are proud and support the work of ensuring that our schools are safe. As you can see, a very important aspect of our school's safety plan includes ongoing staff training and collaboration with our police and fire department to respond to medical emergencies. Together as a community, we continue to make sure safety is our first priority as we work together to make Franklin Public Schools a better place to learn, a better place to work, and part of a better community. Thank you all very much.
Okay, and for the board, we'll take a short recess until 6:40 while we set up for our next portion of the meeting.
Okay.
We are now going to move to item 8A, Community Comment. So I'll ask the audience, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Any community comment? All right, hearing none. We will now move to item 9C, Personnel and Policy 6320 Open Enrollment. So we'll get time to get that ready here, because we have to jump on the agenda. Yeah, this is where we're moving up open enrollment policy. Okay, this policy has been revised due to changes recommended by the Department of Public Instruction and in accordance to state statute, and includes adding administrative rules into policy. Therefore, we will most likely see this policy before the board more often as changes in open enrollment procedures come forward. And I believe Dr. Miller has a revision tonight to hand out also, and I'll let her explain that before I ask for a motion, so.
Okay, so in addition to the edits that were provided prior to the meeting, if you go to the second page of the policy that I provided you this evening, you'll notice that in the middle of the page, it says, "Students who are currently attending the district will be guaranteed an open enrollment seat." We need that language. It was stricken, and we do need that language because when we have students who are in tuition waiver, move out of the district, we allow them to be open enrollment students. So for example, if you have a student in ninth grade and his parents move out of the district, they can hold an open enrollment seat and finish out the high school. So we do need that language back in the policy. So that was just the only change to what you received prior to this.
But it's crossed off.
It's crossed off, but it's in green above. I apologize. So under Section 3, Procedure for Processing of Open Enrollment Applications, the last sentence in green, that's where it was placed. Thank you for that clarification. Some of the other changes were just a reorganization, and then we did add additional language regarding the selection process of our special education seats. So there's a lot of detail in an open enrollment policy. It seems to be ever-changing given appeals that happen throughout the state. As districts win or lose appeals, we get legal advice on things to change in policy. So to Ms. Evans' point, you'll be seeing this more regularly, excuse me, or annually at least, so that you can approve it. And it just strengthens our ability to win an appeal, to have all the language in policy. That was the last bit of advice that we received from legal counsel. So with that, those would be the changes we're recommending this evening.
So then before we have any other discussion, I'm going to look for a motion to approve revised policy 6320 Open Enrollment with the revisions added tonight by Dr. Miller in your document that you received. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Is there any discussion?
What's the change on, second page, in the green? You mentioned the, you added that line, but it says, "You added random selection. Provided that siblings of currently attending students will receive preference to accept an open enrollment seat over students who have applied for open enrollment and do not currently attend." What does that mean?
It's stated above in green so that in the random selection process, if we already have an open enrollment student in second grade and there's a kindergartner coming, that child gets preference because their sibling already attends Franklin Public Schools.
With the addition to the revised language with all the different dates on it, should there be the revised with today's date on it?
Absolutely.
At the end?
Correct. We do need to add that.
Any other discussion? So then the motion would also include the revisions of adding the revision date to the document, to the policy. So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then next, we will move to, back to the regular agenda, which would be item 7, Reports, Presentations, and Other School Board Business. 7C, Open Enrollment Seats, action item. Ms. Elhousen.
Good evening. In your packet, you see, as typical every January, the request for approval of open enrollment seats. Although I take the lead, this is more Jim and I working together along with Dr. Miller to look at compliance with our class size policy, to ensure that that's a factor in the equation, as well as then the roll-up of students and any projections that we're able to utilize during the process. The consideration is for 68 seats. You see them broken down there by the grade levels in which we would place them, and then the number of seats for children with disabilities. Certainly, if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
How are we looking in terms of open enrollment seats at Robinwood? Is that, that school is still not having open enrollment placed there, or things evening out now?
It's, I'd say we're getting to evening out, but it's not a school. So kindergarten for certain, as we've done in the past. We have placed seats in Kinder at Robinwood, along with all the elementary schools. There will be one grade level where there is a couple seats that we can take children at Robinwood for next school year, so that their class sizes are in alignment with other class sizes across the system.
It's a program that can be used as an equalizer.
Yeah.
Right? And if, and if a child gets into one school one year, does that, that does not mean they're in that school the next year? I mean, you try to, right? But, or does it?
It does, for the most part. I mean, it's...
It's rare that they've changed.
Where that would move, okay.
What it, what it does mean, though, Ms. Nielsen, is, so if, it kind of goes back to the question Linda asked about policy. If there was a kindergartner, right, originally, we tried to keep them within the schools. So opening up the grade level, if we have a couple seats, and coincidentally, we might have a sibling at Countrydale, because there hasn't been before, we could, we could pair them back at their same school. We try very hard when we have multiple requests of a family to not split schools when we don't have to.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve 68 open enrollment seats for the 2020-21 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available, and with 13 seats in the Speech and Language Program, based on the criteria contained within policy 6220 Open Enrollment. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So why is 5K have 20? I guess why, how does that work? 4K has zero? Is there, what's the magic there? Or is there no magic, just the way it is?
So typically, we average about 20 in that kindergarten number over the past couple of years, but the motion allows for that movement where needed. With 4K, this would be our second year, so it's, it's a pattern we don't know yet, based on any trend lines that we have seen. We know that the program has been successful and that we have likely, we will likely see an increase in it as the reputation of the program is built out, and the parent satisfaction has been very high of the program. So we have to take that into consideration as we watch those second-year numbers and be cautious about placing seats there at this point in time until we really see those enrollment numbers materialize.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then item 7D, the Treasures Report, is available in the Board Docs library. And item 9, School Board Liaison Reports. Item 9A, Personnel and Policy, Policy 4171, Family and Medical Leave Act. The administration, with the advice from legal counsel, has made revisions to the Family and Medical Leave Act policy. The policy in itself makes reference that we comply with the law and run federal and state leaves according to eligibility and concurrently when possible. The administrative rule is presented in whole as new to ensure that we are incorporating all aspects of the laws and that are required to be apparent in a formal policy, but gives us flexibility to adjust when the law changes. I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy 4171 Family and Medical Leave Act as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion?
I noticed one of the language changes from, from the paragraph that was stricken, the first paragraph specifically references that if there is... "Leave will be administered in a manner which is consistent with the minimum requirements of the Acts." When we have the Wisconsin Family Medical Leave Act and the federal in play, with language as being changed to, it reads down below, it says, "The more generous provision will control in the event that there's a conflict between the two Acts." Was there discussion when we had this, as this has been in play, that that was a problem? Is there, was there a big change between minimum and, and the more generous? Or how did that language come about?
I can't speak to the language from 2007, I'm sorry. But I can tell you that the more generous of the two is what's required by law.
Oh. Clears that up now, doesn't it?
I believe we've implemented in that regard as well.
Yes, we certainly have in my time here. But it's, it's, it's in the favor of the employee when you have two laws like that, that they get the more generous of the two. And Wisconsin's not completely unique, but because we have both a state and a federal law, that creates that level of complexity.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that might not be a good ad to put at the end of that sentence, "As required by law," if that's indeed the case. That would definitely have cleared it up for me. Right?
Certainly fine to do, yeah.
Is that okay with everyone?
Is that a provision? I mean, if that's, if that's the provision, I think that would help clear it up a little bit better as for future reads. Could have a little clarity. That'd be fine. Okay.
Any, any other discussion?
And most of this comes from law, or how did we, because you kind of got rid of everything and started over. You found the one you liked and went with it, or?
It was old. It was from 2007, so it really wasn't adequate anymore.
Both the state and the federal law have been amended multiple times since 2007. The military leave section in particular is very recent to the federal law. So for the most part, everything that's in the administrative rule, I should say this, 90% of what's in the administrative rule is required by law. And then the 10% is our requirement to expressly state how we apply parts of the federal law. So I'll just give you an example. You can choose a year, how you apply a year in the federal law. We apply a calendar year, so we have to expressly state that in the rules that an employee would know that. How you substitute time is an express stated requirement then. So there, there's sections that were certainly filled out to be sure we're Franklinized in them, how we apply them. But 90% is straight from the rules of the laws. And again, a lot longer than it probably needs to be, because you've got both state and federal merging in here in multiple times.
Do we ever get any issues with the condition, or, I see it's pretty well defined here, but is there, do you get any debates on that, or is it pretty straightforward? Do people?
What qualifies?
Correct.
And I, of course, I mean, what would I do all day if I didn't have something that caused a debate?
Because I see, you know, we have hospital care, you can't debate that, absence, pregnancy. I guess one thing, I don't think you have to answer for this, but, you know, I think about grief and how that impacts people's performance. We don't talk about that. And it's not really, is it a medical condition? It could be a mental health condition, but...
The latter.
So it's really...
Absolutely.
So mental health is kind of baked in here.
Absolutely.
I mean, we talk about, that's an issue that we see more and more of, and I'm not sure...
And they're...
It's not science or anything, but those are considerations in here also.
And they are absolutely applicable under the law.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So then we have a motion by Mr. Gamble, second by Mrs. Witkowski, to approve revised policy 4171 Family Medical Leave with the addition of "as required by law," as suggested by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll move on to policy 4173 Absence from Work. The administration is recommending elimination of policy absence from work. Terms related to absence time are best served in our employee handbook, similar to other benefits or working conditions that are administered and approved at a supervisor and/or HR level. The accrual, approval, and type of allowable time are varied to meet the needs of different work groups and sometimes adjusted to meet the needs of the district as a whole, i.e. substitute worker capacity. Managing these types of requirements in policy is neither efficient nor effective as employees use their handbooks as the information sources. And ultimately, in our, it, ultimately, it is our, ultimately... It is our obligation to ensure our requirements and practices meet the needs of staff and students fairly and are legal. So I'm looking for a motion to eliminate policy 4173 Absence from Work. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion?
Mr. Sprague.
That was Mr. Sprague.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sprague.
So these things are in the handbook then? And are they the same? Is it really the same? I didn't pull the handbook, but are there changes? Would it be different if I pulled the handbook, would it be different than what's in here?
Because it's from 2007, that answers just.
Okay. All right. Depends upon work groups and all that stuff.
And our adjustments to meet some of those things that Mrs. Evans referenced over time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item 9D, Board Liaison Reports. Do we have any liaison reports? I do have one, I met with Mrs. Elhousen for a personnel liaison meeting and she informed me that, well, we all, we know now because we did the open enrollment, that open enrollment was just completed and she's beginning to look into staffing next month. Retirement notices are due by February 1st. Summer school planning will begin soon, including staffing for summer school and as you remember, we discussed there'll be more enrichment in that program, so I believe that'll include more staffing because of that?
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily, okay. No. So Ms. Elhousen and Mr. Reuter had a mid-year meeting with our mentors and mentees. As you remember, at the beginning of the year, we had 60 new hires, so when you put the new hires and their mentors in one room, there was over 100 of them getting together for that and it was nice to have everyone back together in one space. There was positive feedback from them and later they'll have a level-based focus group this spring with the, I'm sorry, did you say mentees or mentors only?
Mentees, the new hires.
Mentees, that's what I thought, to see what worked and see if we have to make any modifications in March. And then educational assistance, a retention focus group for them. There'll be five of those sessions and I believe you had one last night?
Yep.
And so Ms. Elhousen is looking for improvements in that area to get feedback from the educational assistance. And then also, there's a spring wellness push going on and with Go365, a refresher on that to let the employees know how those points work and two biometric screenings will be offered next month. I believe that works with the points also for Go365. And then cooking classes will be offered and spring fitness classes. And that's what I have on that. Any other reports?
I'm out with Mr. Reuter. We also talked about the mentorship program. We also talked, largely what his group is doing now is the implementation of the courses that we just approved and also the school improvement teams, which we saw a lot of today. So that went well.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? All right, thank you. And then School and Community Engagement Visits, 9E, do we have any of those?
I got to go to Countrydale today for the fifth graders discussing whether milk should be, chocolate milk, sorry, should be allowed in lunch lines. So the fifth graders sort of had a debate and wrote their papers.
How'd it turn out?
Yeah, what to use?
Well, they would like it not to be allowed, but the parents voted for it to be allowed.
I'm doing that Friday, so were you there?
I'm not going to be there this year.
Oh, that's good. He doesn't like chocolate milk.
Oh, no, you called him out.
Well, he told us that last year. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, I don't know if this counts, but I'll say it. I'm assuming the schools have fun days, don't they? The schools, like for employees? Okay, well, the ECC had their fun day last week while we were at the conference and they had a pie day here, so I didn't get to be involved in it, but I contributed pies. But they had a pie day here and...
National Pie Day.
So they did trivia also regarding making pies, so I thought that was interesting, so...
We did, it was National Pie Day. We had a debate between National Squirrel Day or National Pie Day and we went with National Pie Day.
Squirrel Day?
It's the fun committee.
Thought that was March 14th.
What?
That's PIE.
That's PIE, this is pie.
Oh, it wasn't?
Real edible and Janet made the most amazing pineapple pie that most, I mean, we had a lot of conversation in the lunchroom because it's just not a common pie and for many people it was the first time, actually, I think all of us, that was the first time we tried pineapple pie.
There you go.
Okay.
So it wasn't Pie Day?
PIE.
It was the real pie day.
You're very transparent.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so item 10, Closed Session, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Sub1, SubC, to discuss administrator employment and contract.
Some move.
Oh, yeah, do I hear that? Motion by Mr. Gamble, second by Mrs. Witkowski. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Okay, motion carries. We're in closed session at 7:54. Okay, we are back in open sess, oh.
Washington Board?
Oh, we didn't have a motion to return to open session. Can I have a motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mr. Gamble, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in open session at 8:43. There was action taken in closed session and then now we'll move on to item 10, item 11, School Board Debriefing. Are there any comments on the meeting?
Excellent presentation.
Yeah, that was a very good meeting.
Very good to recognize all those people.
It was, makes me feel proud to live here.
Two weeks before the incident is when they got the certification. That's pretty wild.
It's a proud day. So item 12, Future Agenda Items, we have the Southwood Glen Elementary School Presentation, February 12, an audit report, February 12, and state convention reports, February 12. And I did email the link to the board members for those reports. Item 13, Looking For A Motion To Adjourn?
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Gamble?
Mr. Sprague.
Mr. Sprague. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 8:44.